We can reconvene our meeting to open session. The board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a personnel matter, a confidential legal matter, and a student matter. We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Wendy Sampson.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Christine Beck.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Catherine Addo.
And Judy Keel.
And Willow Bear will not be here tonight. She's attending to a personal matter. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the February 16th, 2022, regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Three, meeting reports. First up is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I first want to begin with some updates to our COVID protocols and changes. Today was the first day that masks were optional. I think many people were happy with that. I also want to talk about some of our changes in regards to, or follow-up to, our district reopening committee who met yesterday to address some of the protocol changes. So this week, on Monday, we did begin, and we had announced this before, to have students return to the cafeterias with less distancing, and that's been well received. I spoke with the principals, and everything is going well with the transition. Kids are going through the lunch lines now and seated in the cafeteria as opposed at the elementary from their classrooms. We will continue to use seating charts in classrooms and on school buses so we can assess any issues of health and safety should we need to. The reopening committee also did agree that we should continue with COVID vaccines being required for high-risk activities, which would be for the spring. Visitors to classrooms would be required to show proof of vaccination, and we talked a little bit about larger events in the spring. Obviously, things can change very quickly, but if there's large events that are inside, we would recommend the continued use of masks for indoor gatherings, especially if people are not vaccinated, but we would not require it. We also did receive New York State Department of Health guidance last night around 10:00, and within that, we will be requiring students who return from having COVID, if you remember, the protocols changed where students, if they're meeting certain criteria, can return on day six. The Department of Health is requiring that from day six to 10, if they're in school, after being positive, that they wear a mask during those remaining days, so we will do our best to enforce that. That's the actual only new requirement schools need to follow, per the new guidance. We will continue to report our daily cases so people are aware of potential exposure. The guidance does recommend if someone's exposed, they should, they can consider wearing a mask for 10 days and testing on day five. That is an option for families to consider. We have plenty of home test kits available, so if anyone needs a home test kit, just contact your school and we'll get you one. We also did speak about the mitigation plan that we put in place in the fall, and we've been working through, and because that's no longer aligned to the New York State Department of Health or CDC guidance, we'll be discontinuing the use of that because it doesn't align, and we'll be following current and future guidance provided by state and federal requirements. So I'll just pause there because I know several board members were on the reopening committee, just making sure I highlighted all of the things we discussed.
Yeah, I think that was everything.
That covers everything, yeah.
Okay.
Can I just ask some questions about that? Has the state given us any guidance regarding possible contact tracing? You know, you mentioned if there's an exposure to test at home, how are we going to know if there's been an exposure if we're not doing any contact tracing?
We're not.
So the contact tracing is, we are aware in school of any students or potential areas of greater risk, so we would make note to notify families of a direct exposure. The state did not provide anything further on that. You know, obviously, when we notify, we're letting you know there was an exposure in grade two at a certain level. Obviously, at the high school, it's a grade level because you can't specifically identify classrooms, but yeah, there is no, I don't believe there's going to be any additional contact tracing requirements for schools at this point.
Can we provide parents with any additional information? I understand at the high school level, you're just saying grade, but at the elementary school level, can we let parents within the classroom know? Because right now, we're just saying the grade, so you don't know.
Right, so part of the issue with that is confidentiality, and if you're identifying a specific classroom, you could be identifying a specific staff member or a student if it's obvious a student is out, so that's why we are indicating a grade and not a specific classroom because of confidentiality.
And there's no requirement, Meredith, for the parents to actually tell the school that their child has COVID? I mean, they should, but they may not, so we might not even know if there's an issue.
I understand, but if we do know, you know, without...
When we try, so I guess to, in the, when things first changed and we were considering notification to be more specific, we found that it was too identifiable to be that specific, and we weren't comfortable doing that. It was putting some kids and families in very difficult positions.
I understand, but now we have other kids and other families in difficult positions in that they feel like they don't have the information that they need in order to be responsible and test if there's been an exposure. What did we do with lice? Like, didn't we use, no, I'm serious, this is not to be funny, but what did we, don't we send out a classroom note that say, you know, there was an outbreak in class, like a particular class? I remember getting those letters, so I don't know.
I know we do that for strep throat, too. Like, if there's a kid in the class that has strep, you get a note home with your elementary school student that says, "Just as a heads up, somebody in the class was diagnosed with strep throat."
I never got one of those, but I did a lice letter.
I've not heard of that.
We did, we did get the, we did get the ones about lice, and, and, you know, it was something that I remember both with my son and with my daughter, that when they came through elementary school, eventually, somebody ended up with it, and we got a notice.
So one of the challenges, if you say a staff member, you're identifying who it is.
But you don't have to say a staff member.
Forget the staff members. I think Meredith's point, if I understand you correctly, is that you're concerned about parents of young children and what have them having enough information to make a decision as to how they want to respond, whether they want to test their kid to make sure if there was an exposure or not, make sure their kid's okay, that it would seem to be no harm any more than notating that, you know, sending a note home that somebody in the class has lice, to saying somebody in the class tested positive or was exposed or something.
So we could potentially do that in classroom at elementary. We can do it for a bus, but you can't do it at the middle or high school.
No, but I think at least that answers the question for what we can do, and I think since we're already doing it for lice, we might as well do it for this.
And yet, even more than lice, I equate it to, I mean, with a case of strep throat. I know I got a zillion of those notes that would come home just saying that some, somebody in the classroom was diagnosed, please be aware and keep an eye out for the following symptoms.
Didn't we do it for the flu and SARS?
No, the only one, I just would get lice and strep.
And then, just on this line, if, when reading the guidance that came out on, let's see, on the 28th, it said that to protect us, themselves and others, and stop the spread of COVID, schools should notify through either group or individual contact tracing, affected staff, students, and parents, whenever an individual was in the same room as an infected individual, and they're on masks for more than 15 minutes. Is, am I reading this wrong, or is this, or...
So that's what we're, we are notifying, but we, we can't do that for, what I'm saying is, we can't do that for eight classes a day in the middle school, or nine classes a day at the high school, you know, or the cafeteria. We can do it at elementary by classroom?
Mm-hmm.
And that's just, that's a recommendation, it's not a requirement.
No, right, it's a should, not a must. I read that, but it's just interesting the way it's drafted. It's a should and then an either-or.
Right.
Which is consistent, as I understand it, with the level of guidance that we've received. Yeah, it seems like anywhere we can.
Reach out to the, maybe through Joanne, to the elementary school nurses and see if they could follow a similar protocol that they use for...
Well, we can, we can do that. We do it through district office, so.
So, okay. Interesting. The one other thing that occurs to me, we did talk about at the meeting, and I think it was in the email that went out to parents, was that even though the mask mandate has gone away, if a student presents in the nurse's office with symptoms of COVID, that they will be asked to put a mask on.
Right.
Which is in line with...
What we've done in the past.
What we've done even pre-COVID with signs of flu, things like that.
Right.
It seemed, made sense.
Correct.
Did that come out in the communication that you sent out?
It did.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if you saw that, so I just wanted to make sure that, yep. Anything else on that?
Okay. So I also want to recognize one of our middle school teachers, Kaylin Misselli. She's been named as an award winner for the 2021-22 Outstanding Classroom Teacher, Middle School Award, for the New York State Council for Social Studies. So she was recognized for the contributions she's made to social studies education, and she will be honored at an award ceremony on March 11th. Mr. Petritoni, who's the supervisor, just had a lot of accolades noting that Caitlin is, Caitlin is well-deserved. She's a team leader at the middle school, a mentor for teachers, and she's just done a great job in her role in sixth grade for social studies, so I'd like to congratulate Caitlin. And I would like to highlight a few students. First, I'd like to announce that some of our Bethlehem students were selected to, by, and recognized by the 2022 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, and these are some pictures, I believe, yeah, that Brittany's showing, presented by the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers, and since 1923, the Scholastic Awards have recognized some of America's most celebrated artists when they were teenagers. So I'd like to recognize the following students for honorable mention, mixed media, Sophia Courts. Honorable mention for mixed media as well, Izzy Brands. Honorable mention for photography, Natalie Jada. Honorable mention for fashion, Robin Arneson, and gold key painting, gold key for painting, Corinne Anderson, and Corinne will now compete for a national painting award in New York City, so these are some of the works that they were recognized with, for. Thanks, Brittany. And next, our last students we'd like to recognize are for Poetry Out Loud 2022, so I, where'd Mr. Nash go? There he is. So we will be introducing you to a couple of students this evening, so go ahead, Dan.
So good evening, board members, families, and friends. For those of you who don't know about Poetry Out Loud, it is a national arts education program that encourages the study of great poetry and helps students master public speaking skills, build self-confidence, and learn about literary history and contemporary life. I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Rickert for organizing and being the driving force behind our participation in Poetry Out Loud. Because of his work, this was our fifth annual local competition, and the first time that we have had two students make it to the state finals. The two students who will be a part of the state finals are joining us tonight, so before their presentations, can we get a quick round of applause for Pamela White and Sophia Courts? Pamela White was our school champion and runner-up at the regional competition, and Sophia Courts was our school runner-up and champion at the regional competition. Again, these students have graciously offered to perform selections, so let's begin with sophomore Sophia Courts.
"Two Guitars" by Victor Hernandez Cruz. Two guitars were left in a room all alone. They sat on different corners of the parlor. In this solitude, they started talking to each other. My strings are tight and full of tears. The man who plays me has no heart. I have seen it leave out of his mouth, I have seen it melt out of his eyes. It dives into the pores of the earth. When they squeeze me tight, I bring down the angels who live off the chorus. The trio singing loose in organs with melodious screwdrivers. Sentiment comes off the hinges, because a song is a mountain put into words, and landscape is the feeling that enters something so big in the harmony, we are always in danger of blowing up with passion. "The Other Guitar" in 1944 New York. When the trio Los Pancho started with Mexican and Puerto Rican birds, I am the one that one of them held tight, like a woman. Their throats gardenia gardens, an airport for dreams. I've been in theaters and cabarets. I played in an apartment on 102nd Street after a baptism pregnant with women, the men flirted and were offered chicken soup. Echoes came out of hallways as if from caves. Someone is opening the door now. The two guitars hushed, and there was a resonance in the air, like what is left by the last chord of a bolero. Thank you.
And now junior Pamela White.
"Candles" by Carl Dennis. If on your grandmother's birthday, you burn a candle to honor her memory, you might think of burning an extra to honor the memory of someone who never met her, a man who may have come to the town she lived in looking for work and never found it. Picture him taking a stroll one morning after a month of grief with the want ads to refresh himself in the park before moving on. Suppose he notices on the gravel path the shards of a green glass bottle that your grandmother, then still a girl, will be destined to step on when she wanders barefoot away from her school picnic if he doesn't stoop down and scoop the mess up with the want ad section and carry it to a trash can. For you to burn a candle for him, you needn't suppose the cut would be a deep one, just deep enough to keep her at home the night of the hayride when she meets Helen, who is soon to become her dearest friend, whose brother George, 30 years later, helps your grandfather with a loan so his shoe store doesn't go under in the Great Depression, and his son, your father, is able to stay in school, where his love for learning is fanned into flames, a love he labors later to kindle in you. How grateful you are for your father's efforts is shown by the candles you've burned for him, but today, for a change, why not a candle for the man whose name is unknown to you? Take a moment to wonder whether he died at home with friends and family or alone, on the road, on the lookout for no one, to sit at his bedside and hold his hand. The very hand it's time for you to imagine holding. Thank you.
I just want to again thank them both for their time this night, and so that they know they have our full support as they move on to the next level of competition.
That was very impressive by both of you.
Do you have pins for them?
If you want to come up, we have a pin for you. And thank you, Mr. Rickert, for organizing the event and for being here this evening. Thanks very much.
You guys were great, great job. That was awesome.
And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Anybody have any other questions for Jody before we move on? Next up is our board report. I do not have a lot. It feels like we were just here, we just had the break in between, and so, just welcome back to everybody. I hope everybody had a good, a good winter break. I will say, it is, it's, I think it was probably a weird day today in all of the buildings with the masks coming off. It has been great to see some faces, but it is also, I think, great, I've heard reports from a number of different buildings that people have been very respectful of people who've chosen to keep a mask on, and likewise, people who have chosen to take a mask off. So that has been great to hear. Does anyone have anything else that they'd like to share?
Just one second, I got calls from a couple of different parents at two elementary schools, the middle school and the high school, all of which were saying, "Great job to the staff, great job sending a good message, and let's keep up the, you know, kindness and respect because it just makes, it makes school a great place." So my thanks to the administration and the staff who are leading on this.
Anyone else? Next are our student reports. Do we have anybody from the high school student senate with us tonight? Let's see a hand out there. Is there, okay, I think that's a no. I think we have somebody from the middle school to give us a report.
My name is Phoebe Dellenbaugh, and I'm in sixth grade on Hudson House.
I'm Maxine Lee, I'm Maxine Lee, and I'm in sixth grade Mohawk. First off are some student council updates. BCMS Student Council is conducting a fundraiser for the Cerebral Palsy Foundation on St. Patty's Day, March 17th, selling shamrocks for $1.
Some lunchroom updates are that on Monday, the middle school students changed up their lunch seating. We went from four eating locations to two, and we are now using the cafeteria and library. Additionally, students are now sitting in pods of four rather than rows.
Our hero of the month for this February was President Barack Obama, who won by the largest margin of victory of any of our votes. Our character committee will be meeting next week to determine our hero nominees for March.
Mask updates. Today was our first day of masks being optional. I've noticed that about for every six people in the, in our homeroom, in my homeroom that was wearing, was not wearing a mask, there are at least four people not wearing one.
We wish you all a happy spring and can't wait for warmer temperatures.
Thank you very much.
Girls, just one second. I have a request for you to bring back. So you have a assistant principal named Ms. Monroe, right?
Yeah.
And her name is spelled M-U-N-R-O-E?
Yeah.
And mine is M-O-N?
Yeah.
And can you tell your middle school friends that she is the one that can change their lunch seating, not me?
Were people emailing you?
So I've had a lot of emails from middle schoolers asking if I can change their lunch seat, and I'd love to, but I don't really have the ability to do that, so I just send it along to Ms. Monroe, so maybe you can just make sure they know our difference in our spelling.
Oh, let them know.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
And I think we have some visitors from Slingerlands here tonight also. Maybe someone could, thank you, make that a little lower.
Good evening, good evening, and thank you for having us. I'm Helen Kansas, and today I'm going to talk about academics. Each class has done a special project or activity yet this year. My class had a potato Olympics, where we researched a Winter Olympic athlete and designed a potato to look like them. Then we had them compete in several Olympic events. Another class conducted a bingo game that involved completing five activities to help them understand the book they were reading. One class conducted a trial with students and teachers to determine if Columbus Day should be celebrated as a national holiday. The last class engages in a program called Squiggle, a creative drawing game with a theme. Thank you.
I'm Evelyn Korea, my pronouns are she/her, and I'm going to talk about character. So one thing that builds character is that each fifth grader reads the daily announcements a couple of times a year, which helps us gain confidence in public speaking skills. And we have raised money for numerous needy people through activities such as the soup herbal grassroots givers, Coins for Carings, and caring and sharing. We learned about good decision-making through the DARE program, and wrote speeches and created programs to share what we learned in DARE. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mac Mitchell, and today I'm going to talk about the community. Our school had, had a really cool event at Halloween called Trunk or Treat, where people decorated their cars and gave out candy. We have buddy classes that get together to do special projects and get to know each other. We won the vocabulary original rap contest. We have many spirit days this year, including Favorite Team Day, Flannel Day, and Festive Sweater Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Ella Shade, and I'm going to talk about wellness. In October, we wore pink and raised money for the American Cancer Society. Girls on the Run is starting for girls in grades three through five. This empowers girls in fitness and overall wellness. We participated in the American Heart Association, also known as Kids' Heart Challenge in PE class. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for coming. If you guys want to come up here, I have a special pin for you. And Holly? Sure. Yeah, and I just wanted to say, I just learned last night what vocabulary is, and you guys won that? That's awesome. It's really cool. I was, we were looking for your winning video at my house, and I couldn't put my fingers on, we couldn't find it, so we'll keep searching, though. We got to watch a lot of fun videos. Congrats. Yeah. Thanks for coming, guys. I kind of want to see some pictures of the potatoes.
I want to know if the potatoes survived the Olympics.
Depends on the potato. Next up on our agenda is our presentation this evening.
Can I say something really quick?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Not to bring politics into our board meeting, but I just hope that we can all have good thoughts for the people of Ukraine and your families.
I think we can do that. Our presentation this evening is our next budget presentation, this time on athletics and operations and... Next up on our agenda is our presentation this evening.
Can I say something really quick?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I wanted to bring politics into our board meeting, but I just hope that we can all have good thoughts for the people of Ukraine and your families. I think we can do that.
Our presentation this evening is our next budget presentation, this time on athletics and operations and maintenance, starting with an intro by Judy.
No pressure, but boy, what a tough act to follow after these very articulate young people in our school community. And a lot of fun activities that perhaps even surpassed the fun of budget preparation. So, I'm going to give a very quick recap of what we had covered at our initial budget rollout. And all of this information is available in additional details on our website for anybody who wants more details on the various line items. But in summary, we have about $102.7 million in our total revenues. As we always do for the baseline budget, we roll out our taxes at exactly the same amount as the prior year. And given the very low maximum allowable tax levy this year of only .15%, based on our projections for tying up the budget for this coming year, we believe that we will be able to keep that tax levy at the same dollar amount going into next year's budget cycle. Our state aid was very favorably affected by the increase in foundation aid that had come to us from the governor's proposed budget. So that has also helped provide some necessary resources to our programs. On the next slide, this overview gives all of the various operational areas that we will be covering in more depth through each of our budget weeks. We've already, the dates are noted on there, and again, the details for those areas are listed on our website. And we have a fairly nominal increase in our budget-to-budget increase for this coming year. When we compare those baseline revenues and expenditures, this is the, I think, the first year ever that we have gone into it with a slight surplus of $385,000. And that's another reason why we believe we can keep the tax levy at 0% and no need to tap into our fund balance as we tie it all together. As we go through each week's presentations, we do have some budget requests for program modifications, and those amounts, if approved by the board, should bring us to the balanced budget amount. In the next few slides, I'd like to answer some of the questions that you had posed to us from the meeting on February 16th. I think we might have surprised the board and the community when we actually requested some diesel buses as part of the bus replacement plan. And I think part of that was because of the announcement in Governor Hokel's budget where she had indicated that all school fleets should be fully electric by 2035 and beyond. Her proposal actually indicates that five years from now, going into the '27-'28 school year, you can no longer purchase diesel buses, you can only purchase electrics. And then 13 years from now, as of 2035, schools can only contain e-buses within their fleets, and all diesel buses need to be retired. This is a proposal, and we will need to see what actually is approved with this. There are some logistical considerations that will need to be taken into account by going all-electric, not the least of which is potentially the cost of these buses if the anticipated federal and state grants don't materialize on this. When we had rolled out the proposal last year to purchase electric buses, our plan at that time was to have 50% of the fleet be electric buses and the remainder be diesel buses. The 50% of the fleet, based on our current numbers of the large buses, would have been roughly 43 buses, so that really was our anticipated target prior to Governor Hokel's announcement. Coincidentally or not, the 43 buses also represents one entire row of, in the parking lot for the buses, and that aligns with the proposed capital project expenditures that we have in this coming bond that would install the infrastructure for the charging units along one entire row for those buses. So, obviously, we will purchase buses in accordance with what the requirements are, but for now, we're watching closely to see what the ultimate law will require for us. We have talked very positively of the momentum that seems to be coming from both the federal and the state level for not only school bus fleets, but any form of public transportation to convert those over to electric buses. So, we really feel like we're off to a strong start with the five that are on order and hopefully arriving by May, based on the current production schedules. But we had anticipated as part of those proposals that were rolled out that we would still need to purchase some diesel buses as we were moving forward with this proposed plan. We don't know whether that proposal might change, for instance, where they might say 90% of your fleet would need to be electric buses and you may have 10% diesel. If you have charging stations that come and are installed, say, along the thruway, you wouldn't necessarily have range anxiety with where you were sending your buses to. You'd have the ability to charge them up along the way. So there are a number of very fundamental things that have to happen in order to make 100% of your fleet to be electric. So, again, there's momentum. We feel like it's coming and moving in that direction, but that's going to take many years to get it there. So one of the things that we also, that I wanted to recap for you is knowing that the cost of these buses is more than what we pay for the diesel buses. The reason we were able to get the five buses was because we received $1 million in funding from NYSARDA. So, that funding was very significant. It was $200,000 per bus, which in the middle column on this chart, that lowered our costs down to about $164,000. On that net cost, we also received our state transportation aid, which really lowered the bus down to $28,000 for just the capital component of that. You compare that to the diesel bus in current dollars, is at $146,000. Net of our state aid, that would cause, or the buses would cost $49,000 for the proposal for this coming year. The electric buses, of course, are much more expensive. Our recommendation was that we purchase one bus, and that was because we did want to continue the growth of the fleet with the e-buses. We've committed to this, and we believe that this is the direction to go in, in the future. But because we are hopeful for additional funding resources, we thought it made sense to slow down the number of buses being requested. Net of the state aid, that would cost us $123,000 for an electric bus. And although that's more than the cost of the diesel bus, again, we're looking at this as an investment in green technology. We're kind of doing our part to help with the environment on that. The cost of ownership of the e-buses is also lower. We had talked about that at length last year because there are fewer moving parts associated with the engine on the electric buses. There's no engine, it's battery. It costs much less to maintain those buses going forward. So, we still recommend that we move forward with it, even though it costs more for the capital acquisition piece of it, you will have lower operating costs, so you come much closer to a similar price for the two different types. But again, if we can get $200,000 a bus in outside grant funding, and we know that that money is likely coming, and couple that with the fact that based on the timing of the bond work proceeding, we're just not going to have the full infrastructure there to cover that, that's why we recommended a single electric bus this year. We would anticipate a single electric bus the following year, and then we'll assess what the requirements are at that point and find out where we are with the grant monies coming to us. I know Karim Johnson had just been to New York Association of People Transportation Conference, and they had been announcing the federal dollars that are going to be allocated to New York State. When we had last talked with NYSARDA, they have to structure those programs and determine who's eligible, what are the terms for the grants, and how much money is available. So I think it would benefit us to wait a little bit before we add further to the electric bus fleet. Again, with our new buses not coming until May, we need to have some time also to make sure that we're familiar with the operation and acclimate to using them. We had also talked about the reduction in the fleet, and I know, I think this came across as a very significant change from what we had been accustomed to in the past. We have been up at about 130 buses, and we noted that currently, we have about 1,000 fewer students than our enrollment peak of '06-'07, when we only had 125 buses with more students. When we had more drivers available to us, having that larger fleet did give us the ability to be more responsive to requests that were coming into the department, but it was indeed less efficient. We have had Karim now as the director for over a year. He's had a thorough opportunity to review the fleet and review the operations. He had done comparisons to other school districts as well, and as he had stated at the last meeting, we are very comfortable making that recommendation to drop to 100 buses over a two-year period. And then we also noted, one of the other changes was moving away from the smaller buses, up to medium-sized buses that would contain up to 45 students, that would then give us the flexibility to serve both general ed students and special ed needs relative to wheelchairs and just much more flexibility with the seating and also adding some efficiencies to us relative to destinations and how many buses would be required to transport students. So in looking at the overall fleet proposals, one of the things that we look at, and this isn't limited to the fleet plan either, we do this with our capital projects and we do it with any of our costs that are subject to reimbursement for state aid. We strive to make sure that we're fairly stable with not only our costs from one year to the next, but also factoring in the aid that comes to the district. So to the extent that we can minimize those fluctuations, it really just helps us better control the budget from one year to the next. So if we go to the next slide, the key question we had was, well, if you're reducing your overall fleet, why on earth are you recommending that we buy four new diesel buses at this time? Why don't you just hold on to them a little bit longer? In reviewing this with Karim and speaking about it, what we focused on really was, this fleet plan is in fact a long-term plan. We are trying to get some stability from one year to the next, and we are, of course, trying to make sure that we're maintaining these buses in optimal condition. We've always talked about how, just like your car, the older the vehicle is, the more your maintenance costs are associated with that. The recommended life of these large buses is 12 years, and the buses that we're proposing to dispose of are going to be at or beyond their useful life of the 12 years. In making the request to purchase the four new diesel buses, we were also looking at the buses that will remain in the fleet even after we dispose of the 14 buses. We're only going to have one 12-year-old bus, which of course will be, add a year to that as we go forward. We'll have one 11-year-old bus, and those are going to be anticipated to be sold because they will be at their useful lives. Then we have a pretty sizable gap here, where we don't have any 10-year-old buses because there was a year when the bus proposition failed. At that point, we were looking to purchase roughly 12 buses a year, and no buses were purchased. So that's part of this smoothing out that we're looking at in terms of this long-term fleet replacement plan. We have tried to avoid making a request to the board and the community where we're purchasing $2 million worth of buses in one year and then none the following year, and then going up to $4 or $5 million in the subsequent year. Those types of fluctuations create impacts to the budget relative to that transportation aid that flows to us with those buses. So, again, we're looking at the age of the buses, the condition of the buses, the maintenance records associated with that, all as part of putting together this plan for the recommendations. So, could we hold on to those buses and not purchase four new diesel buses? We could, but the reason that we didn't recommend that was because we were concerned that the impacts from keeping an even and stable replacement plan would be more of a detriment than addressing some of those older buses and...
Is Karim going to provide to us, because I think we asked for like the year of all the buses, like...
Next slide.
Next slide, okay.
Yes, short answer.
And mileage.
Yes. So, on the buses that are proposed for auction, there are 14 large buses that were proposed to be auctioned with another 13 buses that are the small buses. So in the first three rows, you can see that those are buses that are approaching that 12-year mark by the time we sell them, 12 years or more, and that they are relatively high mileage. So these mileage numbers represent for these numbers of buses that are proposed to be sold, the average mileage as of the start of this fiscal year for each of those buses. On the small buses, the mileage is much lower, and those buses are newer. So the reason that we had recommended that those be disposed of now is because they are not being fully utilized currently. So, because we have more buses in the fleet than we need for the operations, these are the buses that are recommended to be sold. We could hold on to them for another year, but if we're not using them, we're still going to have a situation where we will have had to put money into them over the course of this year in order to do the basic maintenance for them, but they're still going to be low mileage next year because, again, based on the overall fleet operations for the department, we don't have the need for them. So essentially, it is different from what you've seen in prior years, but we have excess capacity. So, that was why we were recommending that we sell them now, because we don't anticipate that we're going to have the need for them in next year or the year beyond that. We'd be right back in the same spot, making that same recommendation the following year.
Can we get the actual, though, for each bus instead of like the average? I just would like to see...
Sure.
The mileage for each, because one might be really high, one might be really low.
There wasn't a significant fluctuation. I mean, I had looked at that because I could have shown you the range of the mileage on it, but yes, happy to, we have it, happy to provide it.
And the other thing I was thinking about is that we do have a surplus this year, and yes, we don't have the infrastructure for all of the electric buses right now, but could we preorder so they arrive like at the end of next year? And use some of that extra money that we have and maybe hang on to some of those that have the lower miles?
Preordering, we need to make sure that we have proper authorization to purchase those buses before we do the ordering. We don't order the buses that are proposed for purchase until after the board has approved it, after the community has approved it. These are funds that are effective for the following fiscal year, so we would need to look at that closely, just to make sure that we're still in compliance with those requirements.
Judy, would, is there a way to do the bus proposal to the community so that, once the governor's budget comes out and we have a better idea as to what's included as far as support for this electrification of the bus system for school buses? Is there a way to draft this proposal so that we have flexibility to take advantage of anything that the governor proposes in the budget? I'm assuming if there's something there that helps us... I'm assuming if there's something there that helps us. Is there a way to do that?
Last year, we had anticipated, the big question was, will we or won't we get the NYSERTA funding? So what you're referencing is really what we did for this past budget vote, where we put the maximum possible cost, and then that number was going to be adjusted depending on what we actually received for the grants. We didn't dream that we would be successful to get the maximum number at that point. I really don't believe, based on what we know now, that even if this is approved in the governor's budget, that approves the timeline and the direction that we're moving. I don't believe that we're going to be having the finer details of those federal spending programs worked out in that timeframe. And additionally, even if they did work it out by some unanticipated turn of events, we're not going to have the infrastructure ready to absorb that. So remember, we have the infrastructure in place for the five buses that are coming. We have the ability to extend that by two more buses through the same type of plug-in configuration, but what we really need is what's coming in the bond, and that's not going to be here for two years by the time we have it designed, approved, awarded, built, and ready to go. So I think the timing is fine with what we've recommended. We don't need to build that flexibility in at this point just because we don't have the underlying infrastructure ready for it.
Thank you.
So what I hear you saying is that it doesn't make sense, we want to buy one electric bus because we want to continue on our path, but it doesn't make sense to buy more than one at this point because we're anticipating that there will be grant funding in the future, and we don't want to spend money that we don't have to.
And remember, we are number one in the state of New York with the five buses that we have on order. There is no other school district that is in the position that we are with the five buses. So we're ahead of the game.
So, and there's probably an answer that I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around, is if we're trying to get rid of 30 buses...
Over a two-year period.
Okay. If we're trying to get rid of 30, because I'm looking here that we have 27 that we want to get, that we want to sell. I'm just trying to figure out why we want to...
So there's a different mix in those buses.
Why we want to buy the number that we want to get.
So it's large, and it's small, and it's related to the age of these buses. So again, we're trying to move out the old buses that are at the end of their life, and...
But we don't need to replace those ones because we're trying to decrease our fleet, right?
And you could hold on to that, but again, this is the age and condition assessment, which is why we were recommending, we're going to need to be moving those buses out. We're trying to even out the cost of those purchases. So again, I feel like the community has been very supportive of our bus propositions because we've managed to keep those amounts stable from one year to the next. And the fear is if we don't stick to this plan, that we're going to have greater instability in the purchase requests in the out years based on these mix of the fleet. So I have other options for you to look at.
I'm just trying to figure out why there would be, it would affect the number of buses we would need to buy going forward if we're reducing the fleet number.
You're reducing the number, but the mix of those vehicles, you have some older vehicles that we would not want to keep on the road. So remember, we start to get rust issues as those buses are older, so it's looking at the age and condition, knowing that we're going to need to auction off those buses. And part of it is, remember, we were not recommending that we go 100% electric at this point. So we're still going to have diesel buses for many years, so it's looking at that long-term mix of vehicles in the fleet, both the large and the medium buses, electric and diesel.
It just appears that we can probably get to more electric quicker than a lot of other districts just because we've been proactive with the grants. And I'll be interested to see what you present on the next slide, but looking at those large buses, I'm sure there's a couple in there that we could utilize for the next couple of years in lieu of purchasing new buses. And then as the other vehicles age, we're going to be swapping out hopefully with electric buses. So I guess I'm just struggling with the rationale behind the need. It just doesn't add up. I know that it will cost us very little money to do that, but just because we can doesn't necessarily mean we should.
Is Karim wanting to say something on the fleet? He is the fleet expert. I am merely just trying to convey the overview.
So what will actually happen is, yes, you can not buy buses this year. Actually, you can probably not buy buses a couple of years, but the clock is still ticking on the buses that we'll have, and they'll come up for replacement. So you'll start having wild fluctuations in the fleet replacement. So there'll be one year, I think it's '26-'27, where we'll have to ask for 25 buses at one time because the ages of the vehicles will start catching up because we haven't replaced them over the years.
Can you provide us the schedule of the fleet? Like, do you have a fleet schedule where you have all the buses and how you would end up rotating them out based on your...
Yes.
I think that visual would really be helpful. And that's all.
Karim, before you go, I just want to, on behalf of all of us, congratulations. For those of us, for those, I assume everyone knows Karim's a father. You're the...
No.
No?
Wrong person.
Oh.
Wrong Johnson.
He's not even...
What are we congratulating? I don't know what you're talking about.
I apologize.
Well, you have been doing a...
No baby for Karim.
Congratulate you no matter what.
Who was it that we got that notice about?
A question on the, on the buses in '26 or '27. Karim, you were saying that we're going to have to, we're going to have to probably buy 25 then? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so when you look at the actual, if we don't buy buses, because right now, we're recommending even eight buses for the next 12 years.
Yeah.
That would be the proposal, whether they're electric or diesel. If we hold off because we now have extra buses, just like you're saying...
Right.
And we decide, okay, we're not going to buy buses for the next two or three years, you're now going to compress...
Right, right.
The remaining years, and you'll start having wild fluctuations. So you'll have a zero year, you'll have a 25 year, you'll have a three year, and then the proposition amounts are going to start fluctuating as well. So that 25 year, I mean, a 25 bus request, if we're doing electric and we don't have funding, you're looking at $380,000 per vehicle for those 25.
Right, and that's assuming no inflation. So for the, in the 25, is that, just so I understand, are you saying that would happen if we do not buy buses for the next three years? Are you saying, get your, you know, fasten your seatbelt that's coming down the road one way or the other?
No, if we do not continue with the slow and steady eight buses a year, then you'll start having those wild fluctuations if you say, okay, this year, we're not going to buy any, next year, we're not going to buy any because we do have a temporary reduction in the average age of the fleet because we are reducing the fleet by 30 buses.
Thank you for walking me through that. Thank you.
Don't go too far. And so if we weren't reducing it by 30 buses hypothetically, we would still be needing to buy...
11 buses.
11 buses each year?
Yes.
Yes.
And are we eliminating all small buses from the fleet because of efficiency? Is that what I understand?
Yes, that's one of the goals long-term with it. The small buses also, they have a one-year warranty period. They also have a 10-year service life. So with the medium-sized buses, you get the same service life as the large-sized buses and the warranty. So I believe the warranty is like three to five years, so that's three to five years that the cost is offset by the warranty claims versus the small buses there. After the first year, you're already spending money into them.
And then by selling the newer buses, even the small new buses, you're going to get a lot more money for those, I presume?
Yes, sir, and that's in one of the slides coming up.
Okay, thank you.
So we have tried to anticipate all those questions. So on the next slide, we put the cost of the small buses. So of those buses that we're proposing to auction off, they were all around $60,000 per bus. So with the aid that we get from the state on that, that is $40,000. So our net cost on each of those buses was about $20,000. So we estimate that the auction price of those buses, it'll vary depending on what year the buses are, but Karim had checked with the bus company to get the valuation. You know, if we were going to trade it in, what would the value be? So that's a conservative number with the average of $13,000 based on a trade-in value for those buses. We tend to do better, as you would imagine, when we're auctioning them off in the open market. So using the more conservative number of $13,000, our net cost for even the, you know, the years that we've operated that bus is only $7,000. So we've certainly gotten our money's worth out of the buses, and the reason we're trying to sell them is because our needs have changed, and those buses are sitting there very underutilized at this point. So yes, they're newer, but we're going to get a higher value at auction for them. So then on the next slide is just a quick update. We took two of the buses that are scheduled for auctioning, they're recommended to be sold, and we took the actual cost to service those buses over the 12-year life of those buses. And you can see, as Karim noted, during the warranty period, the costs are much lower on those buses, typically under $2,000 in the initial years. But if you were to draw a line up that graph, you can see incrementally the costs that do go up. So as it's out of warranty and as larger components start to break and need replacement on those larger buses, the highest was about $7,000 in one year for the replacing of a larger system. So you know, not earth-shattering numbers, but certainly indicative of, you know, this is data to support what we've been talking about, is if it's an older bus, we do spend more on maintaining it.
Is that price for part prices, the increase? Because I know we have somebody on staff who like does like the maintenance, most of them.
Yeah, we have our own staff who are doing the work, but they still have to buy the parts that are going into the buses, so...
Okay.
Yeah, that's just the cost of the parts and materials.
Okay.
So if you go to the next slide, please. So this is the recommendation that had been made at the last meeting for the reasons that we've enumerated this evening. So we were recommending that we purchase four of the diesel buses, the large buses, a single electric bus, and then three of the 45-passenger medium-sized buses. And if that is what is authorized by the board, that would put us to the $1,407,000 as the proposition amount going forward. The other alternative is on the next slide, so if you just aren't comfortable with that recommendation to purchase the additional diesel buses, what we would ask for is one electric and three of the medium-passenger buses. So that would significantly drop the proposition down to 821,000. So we can live with the board's preference on this, but our recommendation is to go with the purchase of the eight buses. We do need to have a decision from the board as to what you're comfortable with, because remember, when we adopt the legal ad at the next meeting, we have to include the bus proposition amount as part of that.
Judy, if we do buy the diesel buses, all four of the large ones, when we go to sell, in the scheme of things, will we have newer buses to sell?
If we continue with our 12-year holding pattern and knowing, you know, assuming the mix of what we need operationally, you know, barring enrollment changes and things of that nature, changes in the mix of schools that we're servicing outside of the district, we would still be doing that 12-year replacement cycle. So the 12-year buses would be recommended for auction, and then we would be replacing that. What would change on that mix going forward potentially is that you'd have fewer diesels and more electrics, but you'd still be going for the eight buses per year in one combination or another.
At what point would we have the infrastructure to start, assuming we could afford it and the funding was there, would we be able to start just buying electric buses?
Well, two years out, because that's when we will have the infrastructure completed down at the garage that would enable us. So remember, the plan is to install the cabling under the ground down that entire row of the buses with the stub-up posts so that as we buy the new buses, we just plop the charging unit on top of those stub-ups.
And we're one of few states that have this governor's, I don't want to call it a mandate, but the proposal. There will be demand for the electric buses. So even if we were to, if we were to replace eight buses, two years out, we start replacing them, eight electric buses a year, we would get the fleet to all-electric well before the time we need to. And we would have, as we swap out, we would have newer buses, not 12-year-old buses, but newer buses to put on the market, and therefore, we could get a higher return on those buses.
Yeah, our buses are well-maintained, and we always do very well with them when they're going out to auction. So yeah, it's about $5,500, $5,600 for the large buses now at 12 years of age. So if we were to sell them sooner, based on, say, a requirement to be all-electric, you would realize that in the market, unless the whole world has gone electric and nobody wants diesels anywhere, but I think that's too far down the road.
So with the electric, I just want to get the timeframe down. So let's say we wanted to go out for three electric buses, I'm just saying this year, three electric buses versus one. By the time we order them, which could be the end of next school year, we wouldn't even be getting them close to that two-year mark.
Well, if they were approved, we would order them now. You'd have a valid purchase order, those funds would be encumbered.
But you have all year to, like, let's say it passes with the vote. You don't have to order them until the end of the school year, correct? Like, that purchase order is good for the full school year, and then you would be getting them by the time they came in.
We wouldn't put the purchase order in until we ordered the buses, so it has to be a valid order for them.
But technically, if you were to put the purchase order in later within the school year, because you have the school year to do that, you could get them technically close to the time when the infrastructure was there.
I don't think the infrastructure would be in place.
They're saying two years.
Two years out.
So it would be, if they wait, if you wait till close to the end of next year to do the purchase order and order them, they probably wouldn't be in until the beginning of the following school year. So you're talking about a delay of like six months working with some of the buses that we have.
But we don't know, one thing, just, we don't know what the grant money would be available, so I mean, you could, I guess, you could plan to do that, and then if the grant money doesn't come through as expected, that's the unknown, is what kind of money is going to be available to offset the higher costs of the electric buses, which we don't know right now.
And the other issue is, is that the infrastructure is also dependent on National Grid being ready for us as well. And if we are too aggressive, we can put ourselves in the situation of having buses that we can't charge because National Grid drew their process of right-away acquisitions, public service approvals, town approvals. If they don't meet the mark, then if we did do the delay, have the buses ready for an anticipated date that the infrastructure is ready, we have it done on our side, but National Grid can't connect to us.
Do we have an anticipated date for National Grid? Have they announced like when they think they could be ready for that?
Right now, the estimate is that it'll be a year, so probably around the October 2023 date, they're saying that they'll be ready as well. But you know, there's a lot to gamble on that, and I would not recommend putting us in that situation.
So how quickly could we get the, just the breakdown of your cycle time and like a list of the bus with the individual mileage, just to see visually how you replace the buses?
We have it.
We have it, we can get that to you relatively quickly.
I mean, as soon as I see that, I'll have a much more comfort level on which option I would feel comfortable with, but they may feel comfortable already with different options.
Judy, do we have to decide this tonight, which version we're comfortable with?
Ideally, I was hoping... Ideally, I was hoping for an answer this evening.
I personally am comfortable with the four-large diesel bus plan, plan number one, because of my desire to keep the proposals year-to-year steady. I understand, and it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that next year we anticipate that being a very difficult budget year. Is that correct? Or is that two years?
The following year.
Okay, two years from now. So we know we have something difficult in the future and if we need to skip a year of buying buses, perhaps that's the year to skip rather than this year.
For the reasons Meredith stated, I agree with her.
Catherine, do you have?
I concur.
Wendy?
That absolutely makes sense to me. Do you have more thoughts here?
We can still get you that information, Christine. I think that'll help you to visualize it. It's all gridded out in terms of, you know, what year would the buses be replaced and?
I, I would feel more comfortable if we could decide within a week before the next board meeting because the information was asked specifically for. I guess I don't have a comfort level for me personally, but if there's a majority, then, then you have that. But I don't have a comfort level that, just looking at the amount of small buses that we purchased, like, I don't know if we had the forethought at the time of the change, obviously with the bus situation and the drivers for shortage. We didn't have that. But it seems like we have 30 buses we're not using and it seems like we purchased more than we needed to have that kind of surplus. So financially, I don't feel, and I was part of those board discussions and I know I brought it up a long time ago, but I don't have a comfort level saying, yes, let's buy some more buses when we're selling 30. And I'm very aware, obviously, being in poverty and casualty of salvage values and buses, I still don't have a comfort level that we're doing the right thing. Financially, I still get the feeling that we're doing it just because we can at a cheap amount of money. And to see those small buses up there and how many and the low mileage and the years on them, I would rather see the replacement cycle first before I could say yes to either or. I'm not saying I wouldn't. I just say tonight, without that, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying yes. But everybody else seems to be okay with that.
And I can certainly put the language in the legal notice, version A, with our recommendation number one. And then you can change it at the next meeting. We would just need to update that as part of the board action that evening.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You have a chance. And I'd be interested in seeing the, like, just the visual of how many we're replacing on each year. I know, I know in the past, I think there's been a, it's like a bar graph chart that shows how many over the years. And, and I just, I think that would be helpful for the community also to try to explain why, even though we're getting rid of 30 buses, we still want to buy more.
Got it.
And do you have the other vehicles too? And the other ones that we asked for, the other?
Next slide. You guys are like psychic this evening. So Karim's request was to add 110,000 to the budget. And he is proposing to sell three vehicles and replace only two of the three. He did check, neither of the proposed vehicle purchases are available currently as electric or even hybrid models. So for the Chevy 2500 service body replacement, that's replacing two vehicles that are old and with high mileage. The supervisor's Ford Escape has low mileage, but it is in poor condition. What did change since the last time we presented this is we're going to go for a multi-use Chevy Tahoe. It's the same amount of money, but because you have the ability to transport students within that vehicle, granted, not very many, but some, that would make it aidable, which also helps to lower the net cost. So it doesn't change the, remember, state aid comes in in year two, but you'd still need to add the 110,000 into the budget.
Thank you for checking to see if there was an electric option.
Why is the Ford Escape in such poor condition?
Can you please repeat the question?
What, why it's in such poor condition if it's only 33,000 miles?
Honestly speaking, I'm not sure the usage of why it, before I got here, but the low miles shows that the vehicle has not been used because it's unreliable. So that's why you see the low mileage along with, with the year model.
Okay.
So then, the other follow-up area is, the question was raised about our proposed changes in eligibility for the high school and for the middle school. What do those lines look like if we look at the current boundaries and versus what we are proposing? So on this map, the dark black line that circles is what the current boundaries are for the high school at the one-mile mark. And then if we go to a mile and a half, the other shaded area along the top is where that would be extending to. Okay? So it's just a representation so that you can see, yes, it does include more streets as expected, but it's not incredibly far. And then on the middle school, similarly, the current half-mile distance is the dark black line encircling it. And then the shaded areas are the increase up to one mile. And those are the streets that would be ineligible for transportation based on that proposal. And we continue to solicit public comment on that. We really haven't had a significant increase or response on the comments beyond what we had reported out at the last meeting. And then the other question that we had was, when is the last time that you did a traffic study here at the high school? Because we, the comments that we did have were related to the congestion in the parking lots and is that going to increase based on more students ineligible for the transportation? So there were two studies that were done. One was much older, back in 2001, and that was the basis for the work that had been done in the parking lot at one of the prior bonds. But then there was an updated study in 2017. And the, there were some recommendations in that report, which were all implemented. But essentially, they took the timing of cars trying to exit from the stop sign at the end of the parking lot down by the playing fields going onto Delaware Avenue. As expected, it took a little bit longer to do a left-hand turn. What they had observed was, once you were up to that stop sign, it was between 30 and 45 seconds for the left-hand turn and only two to 15 seconds on the right-hand turn. So even if it has increased currently, you know, there isn't a more current traffic study out there. You know, anecdotally, we may think it's a little bit longer now. But that was part of the reason why we had talked about mitigations. So nobody wants to change these eligibility boundaries. But again, we feel that it is the best of available solutions to help us address the driver shortage. So what we are trying to include in the budget are ways to mitigate those impacts. So we talked about the conversations that we've had with the town relative to either adding some crossing guards, particularly for elementary students at schools where they do not have them currently. And then also possibly doing traffic details, where you have a police officer out there at the peak times. And then perhaps even more important is just larger drop-off windows, like we had in our pre-COVID times, when the kids would be coming in earlier, they'd be able to go to the snack bar, catch up with friends, finish homework that didn't get done the night before. But with those larger windows, that helps address some of the congestion. So we have provided some resources for supervision in the buildings at all grade levels, assuming that that would be necessary in order to mitigate traffic in the parking lots.
I did read through the, the traffic study and I will say that it is not, the observations made in it are not in line with my own personal experience with going through the high school parking lot. I don't know if that is in part because of the increase in traffic because of COVID and the number of people that are driving and dropping off. And I also don't know if it is partly, you know, I know it says that using the, the red lot for additional student drop-off, I think there had been some messaging that had gone out of the high school about only dropping off in the front of the building and not dropping off anywhere else. And again, I also don't know if this is a post-COVID symptom, but there were some observations in the study about drivers being kindly letting people merge and stopping for people to make turns. Again, that has not been my experience. So I would suggest that even if, even if we don't go ahead with the, even if the eligibility piece of it doesn't change, that we look seriously at having somebody at that exit monitoring.
That would have to be a police officer.
Yes.
And that would depend on if they have the ability to offer, provide that to us.
But I, but I would pursue that. And again, maybe it's only when I'm driving that these problems seem to occur, but that's been.
I, I would like to add that I think the drop-off time is very short right now because of COVID. And if that is lifted and we can go back to having kids come into the building at seven thirty, you know, a half hour before, instead of just 15 or 10 minutes, that's going to make a lot of difference.
It is, but it is also pickup time as well. It's at pickup.
There was no COVID when my kids were here and the problems have existed for a long, long.
I mean, to be honest, there, for years.
Years.
The parking lots come up, right? And it's a very short window of time with a lot of people going to our schools. And it doesn't, whether it's COVID or not, there's always traffic issues and there's always complaints. And it's not just the high school. It's every school. For the elementary, the middle school, you know, it's just a lot of people dropping and picking up at a very small window of time.
And with that being said, the, the time, the, the change is affecting, we needed the elementary school to change that distance from what it was currently, or everybody gets picked up, I can't remember what it is, to three-quarters of a mile. And I'm just going to say that I can't support the change because for safety purposes, I just think that we have to find a different solution, whether it's adjusting times, our bus routes. I don't think that's going to help the problem. I think it increases safety issues with our students and I would be hesitant to do it.
Going back to the traffic issues at the high school and the middle school, you know, Jody, and so we just identified one potential mitigation measure, which would be increasing those times. Another potential mitigation that was identified was working to see if it's possible to get an officer out there and what that would take. It would be great to understand what other mitigation measures we could have in place when, I, I think that could help folks, if this does go out to, you know, if this does go out to, to referendum, I think it could help folks understand what their options are and what, what type of safeguards could be in place to help try to move things along. Recognizing, as you said, the parking lot is what it is. However, what can we do about it?
Do we need to make a decision tonight about the, the walking distance?
Next meeting. We need to have a decision no later than at the next meeting because if it is approved by the board, it would need to be included within the legal ad.
My concerns about the walking are safety issues. I'm especially concerned about the areas in town where we have sidewalk directly abutting street. I know we have fewer kids, fewer students that in the system, but we still are going to have more students walking. And I just, I think from a safety point of view, I have, I, excuse me, I was not on the board at the time when we did the last extension of, or change in the walking distance. I didn't agree with it then. I don't agree with it now.
So that's the timeline. Again, we would need to have a decision and consensus of the board, one way or the other, as of the next meeting.
Do you?
Thanks, Judy.
Do you, Meredith or Wendy or Holly, do you have your thoughts? I mean, Jonathan and I are both no's. Do you have a definitive thought on that as of this board meeting?
I'm, I'm supporting putting it out to the public to vote on. I think it's, we're, we have a transportation crisis and we need to do some drastic things. It's not something anyone wants to do, but I do think we are in a crisis and this is one of the few solutions that we have to the problem. Just to make it clear for everyone, I'm in a situation where currently my children would have transportation to the middle school. Under, under this new plan, they would not. So I just want to put that out there. But I do think that we need to do some drastic things and it's going to be difficult, but I think it should go out to the public to vote upon it.
I'm not sure yet.
Okay. That's you, Wendy.
Well. In my observations of living in this district as long as I have, before COVID, buses were not utilized hardly at all. You know, there were a lot of empty buses going by. Not too many people were riding them. That was an issue then. Because of COVID, more, more parents are dropping their kids off. I mean, that's just how it, how it has happened. So if the community votes on what they want to do, that would be a very good, you know, we'd have a signal on, you know, where, where parents really are. I mean, my kid walked to school at the middle school. She didn't have to, but she chose to, so.
Catherine, did you want to add anything or just, no? Okay. Okay. And we had talked about, you know, what the impacts are. So we understand if you're not comfortable with this, even if you move it to the community, the community might vote it down as well. And we talked about there are other impacts then. So if we are not able to hire additional drivers, it will have impacts for the broader transportation services relative to delays, late arrivals, even more packed buses. So, you know, there are impacts. There aren't great options either way we slice it, other than being able to hire the drivers that we're seeking. But we just, we don't know that that's realistic, even with the changes that we've made in salaries. I mean, you, you can't pick up the, the news, you know, see districts, trucking companies. I mean, this is a national issue. So we're just trying to find the best of mediocre options to put forth as a, an incremental solution to help address this.
I'd just like to add one more point onto that is, again, the thing that I am most concerned about is stability and reliability for everybody. If, if this change moves through, it is going to inconvenience some families, but they will know that ahead of time and be able to make plans about their transportation choices. If we don't move forward it and we have a crisis, it's going to make everybody's transportation unreliable every day. Because we know we've seen, you know, oh, this bus is a half an hour late. Well, the parents aren't expecting that. This, this bus hasn't picked up the children and they're sitting outside and waiting for the bus for 45 minutes. That could happen any day. You know, there's very little reliability with that. And that's my concern, is making sure that everybody knows what's going to happen going forward. And yes, this. And yes, this, you know, making this choice about walkability is going to impact a certain number of families, including my own, but at least everybody will have that trust in the system that we're not going to have. No one will have trust in the system if buses are half an hour late any given day.
I guess I'm just afraid with the, the impact is mostly to the elementary student body. And there may be parents who, who let their second grader have to walk that three quarters of a mile. And for a majority of those streets, there are not sidewalks. And that is a concern with our population, cell phone usage, weather-related incidents. I'd rather have a bus show up a half an hour late than worry that my kid's going to get hit by a car. And that I don't want on my shoulders.
Hypothetically, if this proposal goes out to the community and the community knocks it down, do we then go to, is there something that we go to or do you have specifically something you would go to? Or would we end up going to the state limit?
We would not recommend going, the state limit, remember, is two miles for K eight, which we just think is way too high, that you can do it by law, but we are not recommending that. It's three miles for high schools.
If it's voted down, we're not headed there. That's my.
So, you know, we would have to have a catastrophe in terms of lack of available drivers. We could go to two miles, three miles tomorrow, but we don't want to do that. So as long as we have enough drivers to, you're right, we'd rather have them be late than be subject to that degree of ineligibility.
And just to reiterate, I handled injury claims for 20 years. I've settled fatality claims for little kids hit by cars. It does happen and we're not immune to it.
So athletics, who wants to talk sports?
Can we talk sports in five minutes, Holly?
I'm not happy now.
Holly?
And then Lynn, when you're done, you can pass it over to Greg and then I'll come back.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah, take, take, take five now.
What's that?
We're going to stop you for two seconds.
Would it be okay if we took?
Absolutely, of course.
It's a good break. We'd probably take a five-minute break at nine anyway and it's quarter of. Well, we take five minutes. Everyone will be back ready to hear all about athletics.
It'll be a happy topic.
It will.
All right. So take five minutes.
Do we have any pig students here?
Oh, it's your lucky night.
Oh, my gosh. If you guys need a signature or something, why don't you come up now and you guys, you normally only need to stay until nine o'clock, so.
But we're letting you out 15 minutes early. That never happens.
I was so startled. We haven't had this many pig students here.
If you change start times.
Yeah.
Do I give you a few outside or four?
Isn't that going to really be awful?
Oh, sure.
Well, we're still going to need three tiers.
There you go. I'll take two.
The two-tier.
There you go. Where do you want me to send it? Right here?
It was the every other day thing? And there were fewer riders? We really need to.
All right, what's your name?
Widen.
I'm just going to put Emma because I don't want you to photocopy my name. Not that you would or anything. There you go. Just one. Yep, you're all set. Do you need one? Yeah?
Yeah. Hopefully you weren't too bored.
There you go.
Right. What's your first name?
Right now, yeah. E L Y? That's pretty. I've never heard of that before. You're welcome.
All right.
And I was, I was terrified before the kids. Detective Weiss contacted and it, it took until yesterday afternoon. I called, I said, I'm begging, I said, for the safety of the students. It's an issue because otherwise they're having to bring the kids in the parking lot. And I'm like, I'm not having this argument. That sidewalk got me. In the mornings, they're having to be in the front lawn where all the cars are coming and trying to. I'm just, I'm terrified. My son-in-law is a former superintendent. He's having nightmares because of it, because of it. He worked my wife, my daughter up. She used to work at Eagle and Swinlock, she worked at. It's just, even if they, yeah, I understand that the students are not allowed to smoke on that sidewalk. So I, I, if, if they do it at the same time, they're doing the parking lot and it's, don't get in the popular and. And it's just, it, it's, it's frustrating. It's, yeah. Somebody's covering this. Yeah, it, it's not a long string. It's just a problem.
Overweight delay and it's even more of a disaster. It's like, she went that way. But I think I'm with you as far as like letting people know ahead of time if they're going to be able to plan around that because they can, you know, if they know it's coming. They'll ask all the neighbors on the street, well, who's going to be home? I have to work. Who can, who can stand at the bus stop? Like they do. Judy, I think we're going to get started.
All right, Lynn, you're up. Athletics.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So as we always start off every year, just an overview of the depth and breadth of our athletic program. Eighty teams now. Newest team we added recently was varsity girls golf, our two unified bowling, basketball, and then of course, broken up into the other levels. So just looking at this year, the 21, 22 year versus next year's, our first line is obviously just collective bargaining, just increases in pay. We have our equipment code. We are looking at replacing our soccer goals on the main field for the girls and boys soccer programs. Our officials fees, security, and other items would be our reconditioning. We're actually looking at a slight decrease because we are looking at a change in reconditioning companies who are coming in at a slightly lower, lower cost. And then our final BOSIs, we have huddle agreements, which would be our live stream cameras, as well as Schedule Galaxy, which is our scheduling system, along with supplies, uniforms, membership in league and section, state, all those items. So you could see the $43,000 and change increase there. This just breaks it down. This was the $193,000 code, just kind of gives you some, just more detail on it. The officials fees is also a contract, so they are increasing. The Bethlehem YMCA, where our ice hockey program obviously plays out of. Entry fees continue to rise. That's for our cheerleading competitions, cross-country, wrestling and so on. Our lifeguarding fees, security, obviously with Bethlehem Police, and like I said, our, our equipment reconditioning, which is a state mandate. Again, just breaks down our programs here. We have 31 varsity programs. Our three co-ed teams would be our two unified teams, the bowling and basketball, as well as modified swim is a co-ed boys and girls program. You could see we have just over 100 coaches. And then you could see by season, normally you might recall in years past, we would have the total number of athletes, you know, in the program. As we were doing our preparation, we haven't had a full season, a full year since 18, 19. So next year we'll have one, but obviously over the last couple of years, we haven't had modified levels. We haven't had freshman levels or obviously due to the pandemic. So looking at our additions, we have a few additions that we're, we're looking to add. Bethlehem is the only double A, section two football program without three varsity assistants. We have two. Like I said, the rest of the double A teams all have three. Over the last several years, our booster club has funded that third assistant coach. We, we really do need that in order to safely supervise and instruct, you know, our kids. Over the last three years, we've averaged in the mid 40s at our middle school seventh, eighth grade football team. Again, especially at that lower inexperienced level, it's really, really important to have extra supervision on how to properly tackle and things of that nature. So we're looking to add a second coach there with our, you know, mid 40s. We're looking to add assistant coaches for both our girls varsity tennis program in the fall, as well as our spring boys varsity tennis program. Again, this has really been funded by our boosters over the last, you know, several years. Saratoga Springs and Shaker, who are along with Bethlehem, the three consistent, successful programs all have assistant varsity coaches currently. We are constantly pushing. It is us and Saratoga Springs is the only ones who are trying to really make an effort to add modified tennis. So we feel like we took a, a little bit of a step forward this year. We kind of semi-pressured our peers in the suburban council to at least add extra murals. And even if it's just us and Saratoga Springs, we have four co-ed dates, which would be grades six, seven, and eight, both here in Maple Avenue, which is the middle school over at Saratoga. Since then, Shaker and Shen have also started to express interest and it, it'll be one of those items. Once we start doing it, then we believe we'll have at least a half a dozen of programs and it'll be a great opportunity for our kids. We are the only field hockey program in the suburban council without regular access to field turf. Obviously, we know we have our field coming in the next couple of years, but as of next year, the suburban council in section two will be requiring sectionals at the semifinal and final level to be only played on turf. This would have really impacted our program. Three years ago, we were the number two seed and hosted a field hockey semifinal. Obviously, currently we have grass. Back then, we had grass. If that were to be the case moving forward, we would basically forfeit the advantage that we worked so hard for all season. And again, this has been something really that's been burdened, the burden has been carried by our field hockey boosters over the last several years. So this would give us some pretty consistent turf time. As you, I'm sure, remember so eloquently, our field hockey student athletes really shared with us a few months back. It's, it's a completely different sport when it's played on turf. It's, it's faster, the bounces are more true, and, and that's a competitive disadvantage currently our, our team has. And then finally, next spring, our bond, you know, we start breaking ground on the fenced field, field number two, which is where our lacrosse teams play. So just to be proactive, we want to make sure we have the ability to go rent, rent some time either at U Albany or Union College to be able to make sure that our teams are all housed properly. That's it.
Thank you for adding the assistant coaches and the field hockey turf rental because it does, it taxes the boosters to have to pay that money. And I think they really appreciate it. I know with the volunteer coaches for tennis, they've worked really hard for free for a very long time and they're really invested in our students. So it's nice that we can add them to our athletic budget and I'm excited about the middle school tennis. So I hope a lot of kids do that.
That, that's our goal and really, I mean, we, I know we've been talking about it for a couple of years now, but I think once we actually have something formal in place, even if it's extra murals for now, that'll get the ball rolling on things. So thank you very much.
I know, I just have one quick question.
Sure.
I know the past couple of years have been weird in terms of the, the athletic programs and the teams, but I remember a few years ago, we added some different levels for some different, some of the different sports. And I just wanted to ask whether you feel like we're still in the right, in the right place with respect to, you know, which teams we've got where?
Participation levels and things of that nature, yeah.
Participation level, that kind of thing? If you can even tell.
Absolutely. I mean, we haven't had, I, I, we need another year, I think. Last year, with everything being so odd, even though last spring we came back to a full entree, the numbers were significantly down, not just Bethlehem, section wide. This year, it's been much closer. We, we really are in the fall, we're looking at still consistently one middle school modified girls soccer program. We just don't have the numbers. We're seeing that with softball. In fact, this spring, Jody and I have talked recently, we're, we're worried about being able to field a junior varsity softball program. But we have so many seventh and eighth grade young ladies that are interested in playing that we may just try to add a second modified to go along with our modified nine and our varsity for a period of time to get those numbers back up. And of course, we want to go back to a JV. It's, it's vital. We saw success this year. We, we, in football, we dropped down. We had varsity freshmen modified. We forewent the JV level this year and it was great. Our ninth graders experienced success. And now next year, sophomores, they'll be able to compete more, you know, more competitively, but safer because now you're dealing with sophomores, again sophomores instead of, you know, our 35 freshmen. We're excited that this spring we'll field our second modified, you know, lacrosse teams, both for the girls and the boys. That was something we had added a couple of years ago, along with the varsity girls golf. First, varsity girls golf has been a huge success. The numbers are there. Our girls are doing a great job. They're qualifying for sectionals. So that was a no-brainer, you know, for our program. So any, obviously, anytime we know we have the opportunity to add participation, you know, to, to give more opportunities for our kids, we will.
Sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll be interested to see how it plays out over the next couple of years, especially with the kids that, you know, were in seventh grade last year and so didn't have the chance to play modified. So they're going to be a little bit more inexperienced.
Right.
Coming up than they might otherwise be.
But our, our overall spring sign-up numbers are very strong.
Great.
Overall, so we're excited. Hopefully we'll get those second teams filled.
Thank you. I think Meredith had a question.
Well, I would, I would add to your last point, Holly. Not only are some of the kids going to be more experienced going forward, but there may be some kids who are hesitant to try out, you know, they missed a year and a half or two years of, of development and now they feel, oh, I'm behind. I'm, you know, in eighth grade and I've never done this before. So I think we really need to encourage kids to try new things that because they missed out in a couple of years of development, that they're not behind, that we are encouraging first timers, come out, try this new sport, try softball, you know, like try something that you didn't have an opportunity to do before. And along that line, I was just wondering if there are any new athletic programs that we're thinking about. I know that I believe it was RCS just started a girls wrestling team. And I know people in the community have asked me about a ski team beyond a ski club. So I'm just wondering if we are throwing out any feelers about new programs.
Yeah, so those are great questions. We do have ski teams, ski clubs, both the high school and the middle school.
Right. People are asking about actual, you know, ski racing teams.
Right. So we're looking to see what kind of consistent participation we have. But we are already looking at which mountains might offer something that's easier, cross-country is easier to get started. Obviously, we're not particularly geographically close to West Mountain, which most of the section two schools participate at. But that is definitely something. Section two does not have, I, I saw the RCS story, I'm familiar with their program. It's more of an intramural. Section two does not offer girls wrestling at this time.
Okay.
The state doesn't acknowledge it. But again, we do have mixed competition where we do have any females who are interested. And we've had several at the modified level. Aside from softball though, like I was saying, our modified numbers are, are very, very high.
That's great.
Our, you know, our track and field for girls and boys, our, our baseball, you know, our lacrosse numbers are really high. So I think they are coming back despite the inexperience and being out of the, you know, the normal. So I think it'll be a nice spring.
And then just regarding, you said the girls varsity golf program is doing well. Do we have a JV or modified on golf?
We have no, there is no modified in our league.
Okay.
JV, we, we're billing it. It's a, it's a two-year-old program. So it took us a few years to get a JV boys program that's been in existence for years. So it's just participation numbers.
Okay.
We went from five to 12 in year one to year two. And that's in the middle of a pandemic.
That's just another sport that I would encourage kids to try out for because that's something that some kids don't have any access to and may think to get to the varsity level, you know, it's really hard to jump into a new sport at the varsity level. So the more we could do to encourage the lower levels, even if it was an intramural situation, to introduce kids to a sport that they may not have access to otherwise.
Great.
Len, can, do, if you know, how many people, how many students participate in the hockey program and how many in football?
Oh, in, in the entire football program? We have, we had three levels this year. We were in the mid 40s for modified. We were in the mid 30s, 33 to 35 for JV and about 30, 32 at the varsity level for football this year. Ice hockey, this year I want to say we're in the upper 20s. I'd say we typically will be in the upper 20s to mid 20s.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Here's Mr. Nolte with operations and ONM.
Good evening. Not to start off with some bad news, but I am not going to be as brief as Len was. Sorry. All right. The ONM budget is the cost center for the district operations. It includes a, a number of costs related to everything from facilities to grounds to utilities for the district, to custodial and maintenance services, to health and safety regulations and all those compliant issues. We also develop and manage the capital bond projects. Presently, right now, we are in design development of the recent $41 million bond project. And we should be hopefully out to bid by the end of this year with construction starting in early of 2023. So I would also like to, to mention that Nick and Sonia, the Assistant Superintendent of Buildings and Ground, is here for any questions that I cannot answer. Okay. We are at the budget overview, yes. So department operations kind of continues to be relatively flat. The proposed budget represents an increase of about $285,000 when you compare it to last year's budget. What kind of stands out on this slide is the significant increase to our equipment and vehicles line item. As Judy mentioned last week in the budget overview, the district has an inflow of resources along with the reductions of debt service, which is giving us an opportunity to address some additional equipment purchases and some deferred purchases, which I'm going to discuss on a later slide. Salaries, the increase there for next year is in accordance with employee contracts as well as the recent MOA. We are proposing to upgrade to some maintenance positions that is not included in that, that number yet. Utilities, we were able to decrease $34,000. As you may recall, the district purchases most of the electric from forefront energy as part of our 2.1 megawatt solar array that we have. And this is a fixed year contract. Our natural gas, we purchased through a consortium with OCMBOSE, which is also a fixed year contract as well. So these fixed year budgets is, is definitely helping with some stability. You heard that, kind of heard that earlier. So staying on this, you'll see a slight increase in contracted services because we have been basically renting storage units at each of the elementary schools. And right outside the cafeteria here, we have a, a cooler and a freezer storage unit that we're utilizing for food service operations. So these are needed during our, our COVID operations, at least at this point. And we'll talk about special projects on a later slide. But overall, a positive budget. Although staffing levels remain unchanged at 58, it has been a very challenging and difficult year for the, for the department. We had an extremely large turnover of staff with difficulty finding people to fill 12 custodial positions and four maintenance vacancies. At this point, we have all but one that is not filled. And just as a note, substitutes and miscellaneous, that includes everything from night differential to the, the, the extra summer help that we get and insurance buyouts. So I'm proposing two staff upgrades, next slide. We've been monitoring and evaluating the department's staffing structure for, for a few years now. The first upgrade, next slide, is basically upgrading an existing grade seven building maintenance helper to a grade nine building maintenance person. These are civil service positions. And this is in our grounds athletic division. The division has one grade 11 working supervisor and five grade seven building maintenance helpers. We believe that the division supervisor is spread too thin and needs additional support or an assistant. There have been continued pressures on the department to maintain and improve field conditions. Len is very difficult at times with some of his demands. But we also have a lot of grounds work that we have to complete around the entire district plus work orders, everything from moving to putting up scoreboards and, and all, all these extra projects that we do. But we anticipate additional responsibilities in the upcoming year or so with maintaining the new synthetic field complex. So the upgraded position will provide additional technical and supervisory support for the routine day-to-day operations. The, the second recommendation that we have is within our carpentry division, all right? We're looking to upgrade a grade nine building maintenance person to a grade 11 building maintenance mechanic. This division has one grade 11 working supervisor and then the one grade nine building maintenance person. The division's workload includes daily work orders, special projects, internal projects and IT department support. The two employees that we have now typically work together, however, are often split to complete similar types of, of work at different locations. Both employees have the expertise, the skillset, the knowledge, the experience, the ability and the personal characteristics to handle the responsibilities of the assigned work independently. So this recommendation will improve efficiency and effectiveness in the division and will reduce the backlog time resulting in some better customer service. So those totals represent $13,300. Equipment and vehicles. I have two slides identifying the vehicles and equipment requested for this year. As you can imagine, we depend heavily on the equipment to meet the expectations of the district. Most of the equipment listed replaces existing old equipment, other than the purchase of a wood chipper, a sweeper for our bobcat and a maintenance van. Operational, you know, we've been doing this for a number of years. We are seeing the benefits of newer equipment. There's less downtime, less repair costs. And as a side note, I want to thank Karim and the Transportation Department for their willingness to absorb the maintenance of our vehicles in the, in the coming year. So we'll, we'll develop that relationship next year as well. So just to point out a couple of the, the larger purchases. The, the grounds master is, is a very large mower, 20 years old. It's got about 3,500 hours on it. Based upon our maintenance records that we keep and what we're spending on the upkeep, we feel it's time to, to replace that. And it's a very large expenditure. The New Holland tractor that we have is another 20-year-old unit. And that, for what we do, that tractor is underpowered. And we're starting to see more money being spent towards that. I think the clutch as well, I think it was mentioned that the clutch is starting to slip. So not that it can't be repaired, but you know, the unit is 20 years old, so. As part of this total, there's $109,000 at the bottom for equipment, an equipment swap, as I'm going to call it, which I'm going to talk about on the next slide. So due to current vehicle shortages that we experienced, we buy a lot of our vehicles off of New York State contracts or municipal piggybacking contracts. And the vehicles on the left-hand side, we were not able, or we have not been able to purchase, okay? Orders are not being taken until the next ordering window, as they called it, which won't be for 12 months. We canvassed 11 dealers around the area and found that there were no vehicles that meet our needs. We also found that dealers for what they have are selling them for about $10,000 above, above list. So, you know, the purchase of the three vehicles on the, on the left-hand side is not currently feasible or economically feasible because I will not be able to have a PO in place by June 30th to carry those monies forward. So what we're looking to do is, is to swap potentially with vehicles on the, on the right side. One being a replacement Ventrac, another being a tow behind boom lift that we typically rent on an annual basis for parking lot and building light maintenance. And then replacement of two salters for the, the back of the Ventraks that we use for sidewalk maintenance and that type of stuff. So we would defer the 21, 22 vehicles to next year is basically the plan. Special projects. The largest project on this list is adding exterior cooler and freezer units at Glenmont. Lisa Isar, Bethlehem's Food Service Director approached us about storage concerns where they're changing operations. Her meal production has more than doubled and is expected to continue. Recently, in-house, we reorganized space within Glenmont School to accommodate her additional dry storage needs. Establishment of an additional cooler or freezer will allow direct deliveries to the school, thus freeing up the in-house lunch run that we do. This additional time we would use for deliveries to the other elementary schools. The Glenmont project will help the storage problem at those other schools because of this, this concept. Because of our reorganization within Glenmont, we took some space that was used by PE. We built in about $6,500 for an exterior storage shed for PE recessed storage to accommodate that. A couple of the large projects, we would replace the Slingerland storage shed. That's the one in the middle of that parking lot right there. That is rotting and failing. And the next one is what we would look to basically install a Primex bell relay transmitter at three of the schools, Elsmere, Glenmont and Slingerlands. And this would basically sync the school's clock system to the bell system to the network. We just completed this in-house at Eagle, okay? And just one other note, Project Adventure Storage Container. This was included in my 1920 budget, but was not purchased when we froze accounts because of COVID. So we kind of put that back in here. It's a small storage unit that they, they put various equipment in. And then the last slide is our capital outlay. We're proposing our 10th capital outlay. And as you may be aware, SED allows qualifying small projects of $100,000. And that number may be changing up to possibly $250,000 in the coming years. But it allows us to do this and then we will get aid in the following year. But for this year, we're looking to replace 68 old Cisco cameras here at the high school. We have, the rest of the system here is a Vigilon. So this would basically unify all of those cameras here at the high school to this, to this new system. What we're finding is these 14-year-old cameras are not being supported anymore. And there are more projects where we're upgrading the camera systems that is part of the bond as well. So that is it. Questions?
I think you should continue to use my good 20-year-old vehicles. Sorry, I couldn't, I was waiting to say that to you.
I came prepared with mileage and years.
He has your number.
Hey, it's been eight years, they shouldn't find out.
Does anybody else have questions?
My only question was, the equipment line that you laid out was about $389,000, I think.
The swap?
Yeah, yeah. No, no, this one right here. How does this compare to other years? Are we doing more equipment this year?
Yeah, so previous years we were 200. Last year, we were down to about 160, okay?
Are we just, it's just that we have bigger things that are coming up this year?
Yeah, I mean, we only have one tractor in, in, in the, in the department. It's a big purchase. And we were kind of, I guess, taking advantage of possibly some, some funding from Judy, which is always appreciated.
I didn't know you could do that, Judy. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it wasn't as long as I thought it was going to be, so.
Secret to happiness, low expectations. He set the stage for you. Well, I always tease Greg because petty cash for him usually involves six figures. So, so quickly to wrap up the budget for tonight's presentation. So where we are now, based on what has been requested in each of those areas, our surplus is down to 239,000. So when we meet next week, we'll be reviewing some additional requests for the instructional program that will bring that down to zero. And then on the next slide, we have two seats up for the board. The petitions are out there now. And if anybody is interested in running for the seats, they just need to collect 51 signatures on support and then those candidates will appear on the ballot in addition to the budget propositions. And then lastly, our schedule, we'll be meeting again on March 16th to go over the instructional programs. We will be adopting the legal ad at the meeting on the 16th. But then we will actually adopt the budget itself at the April 6th meeting before we move on to the hearing on May 4th. And then meet the candidates May 9th, followed by the big day, May 17th, when the polls are open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM for citizens to come and vote. So if there are no further questions on the budget, thank you.
No, thank you, Judy.
All right.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our recognition of visitors on an agenda item. If we have anybody who would like to speak on an agenda item, now is the time to come up to the microphone.
All right. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Anna Walker and I'm speaking to you tonight in response to the transportation proposition that you will be voting on at your next board meeting on March 16th, 2022. At the last board meeting on February 16th, 2022, I sat along with you through the district's two and a half hour budget presentation, which included the proposed changes to transportation eligibility in 2022, 2023. Some key takeaways from that presentation include the following. Ms. Judy Kehoe presented that the Bethlehem Central School District will be operating on a surplus budget in the coming year. There is no fully formed safety plan in response to the additional children and families that would be walking the streets as a result of this change in eligibility. that would be walking the streets as a result of this change in eligibility. The town of Bethlehem has not committed to taking any action to increase safety, such as hiring crossing guards or clearing sidewalks of snow or ice in a timely and consistent manner. The district has no idea how much of an increased volume they will actually be seeing as a result of this change. The position of crossing guard is also experiencing staffing shortages, where the town of Bethlehem may not be able to fill these positions. So, we would essentially be trading one staffing shortage for another. According to Ms. Kehoe, the district came up with the proposed walk distances to, quote, "even out the number of students who would lose eligibility." So, from our perspective, the walk zones were not based upon any identified metrics or research or identification of where students could actually walk safely to and from school. The reduction in eligibility is an arbitrary number that the district developed so that it's, quote-unquote, "even." In order to continue to provide transportation services that have thus far been provided, the district needs 65 to 70 bus drivers on staff. The district currently has 58 bus drivers on staff with one anticipated retirement. The district recently raised the starting wage of bus drivers to $23.60 per hour, and since then, they have hired seven additional drivers who are currently undergoing training to become fully trained and certified. With the retirement, current employees, and new hires, these numbers add up to a roster of 64 drivers. And with the recent wage increase, it stands to reason that more drivers will be hired and trained by September 2022. Ms. Kehoe mentioned in her presentation on February 16th that if we had money to throw to the issue to solve it, we would. It stands to reason that if we are operating on a surplus budget for the year, then the district does indeed have the money to further increase the wage of drivers or offer sign-on bonuses to entice additional drivers if we do continue to struggle to fill these positions. Based upon the presentation by Ms. Kehoe on February 16th, I am not convinced that the district did its due diligence in developing this plan. It feels like a Band-Aid, like a hole in a bucket that, once bandaged, will simply cause another weak spot to burst open and gush. As you can see, I brought some guests with me tonight. These boys are not only students in this district, they are collectively my living, breathing heart and soul. I brought them tonight because it's easy to say, some kids will simply have to walk to school. I want you to see the faces of some of these kids. These kids who stand before you come from a household with two working parents. Due to our work schedules, these kids get on and off the bus each day to and from school. If we lose our bus eligibility, these kids who stand before you will be walking 3/4 of a mile to school and 3/4 of a mile home from school each and every day. In good weather, it takes them about 20 minutes to walk this distance. These kids will be walking this distance on roads that have no sidewalks. I'm going to repeat that. There are no sidewalks on their walk to school, zero. These kids will be walking that distance with no sidewalks during peak traffic hours. These kids will be walking through thunderstorms, rain, snow, ice, and temperatures that are well below freezing at times. I want you each to think about your own living, breathing heart and souls that walk this earth. Would you want them to be walking that distance with no sidewalks during peak traffic hours in thunder, rain, snow, ice, or freezing temperatures? These kids who stand before you have near-perfect attendance, you can look it up. Despite a pandemic, these kids are in school nearly every single day unless a health issue prevents them from being there. We value their education. We understand that education is their ticket to success. These kids standing in front of you now regularly score at or above the 75th percentile on their I-Ready reading and math benchmarks. They do this through hard work and near-perfect attendance. This change to transportation eligibility may change that for these kids and many more. No longer will they surely be able to get to school if the weather prevents them from safely doing so. As parents, we make hard choices, but this doesn't have to be one of them. Please don't make working families choose between our employment and transporting our children to and from school. Don't make us choose to keep our children home from school because we can't imagine sending them out in thunder, rain, snow, or 10-degree weather to walk 20 minutes to school and then back again in the afternoon on roadways and paths that may or may not be clear and passable. Don't make us choose between the safety of our children and the stability of our jobs. Don't make working families choose between budgeting an additional $900 for after-school care each month to keep their kids off the roads or paying another critical bill. I truly believe that our district can do better. While other districts stumbled over the past two years, this district put forth a well-crafted plan in response to the pandemic that put the safety and well-being of our kids first and foremost. Please reconsider this underdeveloped plan and put forth to voters something that is similarly well-crafted and considers and responds to the impact of these proposed walk zones, and that is a fully executable plan, not a vague set of promises. In my email exchange this past week with Ms. Jody Monroe, she used words such as "working with the town" and "looking at extended drop-off." We don't want vague promises of working with or looking at, we want a solid, executable plan before you move forward with something that will affect families in such a huge way. We don't want to simply trade one set of problems for another set of problems. I implore you, members of the board, I implore you, Holly, Christine, Jonathan, Meredith, Catherine, Wendy, and Willa, if you're watching this or if you watch the video, I implore you to think about the facts and think about the safety of our children. I implore you to remember these faces and the hundreds of others who would be put in harm's way should you vote to remove bus eligibility from so many of our young students without considering the impact. I implore you not to vote for a plan that is a Band-Aid and not a fully executable solution. I implore you to have the backs of the people who voted you to represent and speak for them, and I implore you to reduce the chances of any member of this community accidentally hitting, injuring, or killing a child on their daily commute due to these congested roadways, limited sidewalks, and the currently undeliverable promise of crossing guards in our streets. I thank you again for watching me speak. In addition to my words tonight, I've gathered the signatures and comments of 49 additional residents of the Bethlehem Central School District community who also support what I've said tonight. I've included their names and the comments of those who wish to also provide comment in the remarks that I'll hand over to you now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Amelia Rixwini, and I am a sixth grader at Bethlehem Central Middle School. I am speaking to voice my concerns about the new bus policy the district is proposing, which will affect me and other middle school students in my neighborhood. When school started, I would walk to school from my home east of Elmar, Elsmere, sorry. I did this in spite of the fact that construction signs and overgrown plants often forced me onto the edge of the sidewalk, which would be dangerous enough under normal circumstances, but is even more so as I walk along Kenwood. Now, in winter, my parents often drive me to school. However, I rely on the bus to take me home each day. Walking in winter is not an option for me due to the treacherous conditions. Once, I was walking on the Kenwood sidewalk nearing the middle school when I was almost pushed to the very edge of the sidewalk by uncleared ice. Then, I saw that up ahead, the ice had taken over this entire sidewalk. I was forced to tread through knee-deep snow on people's lawns all of the rest of the way to school. If you expand the walk zone, even more children like me will have no choice but to risk injury or worse every day. Even when the weather is nice, a big risk is still there. Taking away the option to ride the bus when conditions are unsafe will only increase the traffic and the risk. Please, vote against this new bus policy if you value my safety and the safety of others. Thank you. I will hand you a copy of my speech.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Sweeney. I'm a resident of Bethlehem. I'm the chair of the English Department at the College of St. Rose, former trustee of the Bethlehem Public Library, and most importantly, father to three children, two of whom are currently students in the Bethlehem School District, Amelia, whom you just met at the middle school, and my son Gabriel at Hamegrail. On Monday, August 23rd, at 8:00 a.m., Bethlehem resident Jen Hebner was struck by the side-view mirror of a truck as she jogged on the Kenwood Avenue sidewalk across from the middle school. She sustained a serious head wound that required nine staples to close. This hit-and-run incident took place just weeks before schools opened, at just the time of day when children would soon be walking to the middle school along the same narrow stretch of sidewalk, the only path for children like my own, who live east of Elsmere, to walk to the middle school. As everyone knows, drivers regularly exceed the speed limit along this shoulderless stretch of a road that connects Delmar Bypass to the center of town. Dangerous as it is to jog this sidewalk in August, it is even more treacherous to walk in December or February. This winter, the Kenwood sidewalk has habitually been inadequately cleared of snow. I have seen, with my own eyes, middle school-bound children having to walk right up to the very edge of the busy road as cars zoomed past to avoid slipping on uncleared snow and ice. In the aftermath of the August incident, the town of Bethlehem began a search for an engineering firm to develop a plan to slow traffic and improve safety on Kenwood. Until such a plan is developed, pedestrian safety there remains a serious concern. Many of us fear it may only be a matter of time before a child in our community is injured or worse. Now, the district proposes to make a bad situation worse by expanding the mandatory walk zone for middle school from a half-mile to one-mile radius of the school. To the west, the new zone would stretch beyond four corners, where drivers crashed into storefronts in two separate incidents in early November. To the east, it would expand to include virtually all households located on or off of Kenwood, stretching all the way to Mason Road. This would increase the number of children each day forced to walk the dangerous stretch of Kenwood sidewalk between Elsmere and the middle school, where Jen Hebner was struck in August, even when icy conditions render the sidewalk even more unsafe than it usually is. The district's proposal makes no mention of any concrete funding for new crossing guards or other pedestrian safety measures to manage the risks associated with this proposal. And as you probably all know, at the middle school, there is a crossing guard stationed at the exit to the parking lot, but there is no crossing guard at the busy Elsmere and Kenwood intersection, which is right near where Jen Hebner was hit. Nor does the proposal address the side effect of likely increased vehicle traffic, given that some parents in the new zone will opt to drive children who are currently bused. This will add to the already considerable traffic on Kenwood during middle school arrival and dismissal times and further imperil child pedestrians. I have great respect for Superintendent Monroe, the district leadership, and the Board of Education for how ably you have navigated this pandemic. Even in the rare cases where I have been disappointed by a particular decision, I have appreciated the thoughtfulness and consultative manner with which decisions have been made. Therefore, I am disappointed to say that I find myself among the parents who feel that our valid concerns about safety relating this proposal have been trivialized and dismissed by comments from the district leadership. At the February Board of Education meeting, Chief Business and Financial Officer Judith Kehoe offered assurances that no incident had occurred on the middle school stretch of Kenwood Avenue in 10 years, when we are only seven months from the striking of Jen Hebner on that very stretch of sidewalk. And in an email to me, Superintendent Monroe stated that areas newly incorporated into the walk zone, including the stretch of Kenwood Ave., had been assessed by transportation staff as safe and walkable, but this upbeat appraisal is contradicted by recent events and the actions of the town in seeking a firm to improve pedestrian safety there. At the last school meeting, Superintendent Monroe disclosed an existing and unaddressed crossing guard shortage. Superintendent Monroe, you said, quote, "I know people throw out, 'Oh, just get a crossing guard for certain areas,' and there are some downfalls to that. One is that we're not really sure how much of an increased volume we're really going to see. Also, the challenge of getting crossing guards and having subs is an issue," end quote. It is concerning to me as a parent to learn a bus driver shortage is being tackled by the district without first solving the problem of an acknowledged crossing guard shortage, especially when the proposed solution to the bus driver shortage will only increase the numbers of child pedestrians and vehicles on the streets and sidewalks leading to the town's schools. And before I read my final paragraph, I just want to deviate from my remarks for a second. I just want to address something that Meredith Moriarty, you said earlier this evening. You pointed out that if the choice is between reduced services, where some students will not get busing, and a completely unstable system, where we never know when a bus is going to arrive, then the choice is clear. And I think if the choice is framed in that way, I would likely reluctantly agree, but those are not the only two choices. Indeed, Superintendent Monroe has told me that if this proposal does not pass, the result will be longer bus times. So, we're actually faced with a choice between two versions of a stable system, one of which involves lengthier bus drives, but all current students currently served by the system are still served, and another that deprives students of this service. In emails and public comments, district representatives have defended the bus proposal against criticism by shifting responsibility to the town and to parents to solve the problems their own proposal creates. But this proposal is not being brought by parents and is not being brought by the town. The district is initiating this change, and the district is responsible for developing plans to offset the risks it will bring if passed. Vague promises to raise issues with the town do not suffice, and while sidewalk snow removal, I acknowledge, is not the direct responsibility of the school district, it is irresponsible for the district to force more children onto narrow, icy sidewalks without a substantive concrete plan to work with the town to solve this problem first. In the absence of meaningful pedestrian safety measures to protect child pedestrians and address the crossing guard labor shortage, this proposal is untimely and unwise, and I urge the members of the Board of Education to vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any additional?
Good evening. My name is Leah Montalteruk. I'm a Bethlehem parent and the chief executive officer of a capital-region nonprofit organization. Due to a shortage of bus drivers, the district proposes to expand the mandatory walk zones across the Bethlehem School District. Speaking as a nonprofit executive who daily examines numbers, analyzes data, works through hiring challenges, and devises creative methods to solve problems, I am not convinced that the district has exhausted all of its options in determining the best way forward to address the bus driver shortage. To my understanding, the district has no real idea of the numbers of additional students that would be walking on our busy roads twice daily. At the February Board of Education meeting, the district was unable to supply a number other than that it would be more. The district has not adequately studied the implication of additional vehicle traffic on the already busy arteries around the schools. The district has not fully exhausted its options in increasing hourly pay rates for its driving staff. Earlier in this meeting tonight, it was discussed that the district already raised its hourly pay for drivers and is still unable to recruit a sufficient number of new drivers. It's great that the hourly pay has been raised, but maybe it just hasn't been raised enough. great that the hourly pay has been raised, but maybe it just hasn't been raised enough. Jobs that are paying well are being filled across the country. The problem may simply be that potential candidates do not think that this job pays enough. The district has not fully examined safety issues associated with increased pedestrian and vehicle traffic around the schools and more. Without fully studying the implications of expanding walk zones, the Board of Education cannot and should not move forward with moving to a full community vote on this plan, especially a plan with such serious impacts to child safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, Item 6, Action Items. A, Finance Action Items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items 1 through 3.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? B, Professional Personnel Action Items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items 1 through 3.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that passes? C, Support Personnel Action Items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items 1 through 8, and 10 and 11.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that passes? D, Other Action Items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items 1 and 2.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that passes? Item 7, Recognition of Public Comment on a Non-Agenda Item. At this point, if we have any visitors who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Item 8, Future Meetings and Events. On Monday, March 7th, at 6:00, we have a Policy Committee meeting. And then, as Judy mentioned, our next board meeting is on Wednesday, March 16th, anticipating executive session at 6:00. And at 7:00, during our regular board meeting, our presentation will be on instructional staffing and programming and special education and student services. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.